Peace be upon you, this is Saad Mirza from readingourreason.com. And today I'm going to be starting a new series. I'm calling it the Quran Study Sessions. And what I'm gonna be doing in this series is I'm going to be going through the whole of the Quran, God willing, verse by verse. I've been a student of the Quran for the past eight years and uh, thanks be to God, he has opened up a lot of things for me and I um, feel that I need to share that with the rest of the people who are reading the Quran, so I'm hoping that this turns into a sort of a study uh, group if you will, uh, where you can go to what I'm doing here and then read the Quran and God willing gain the insights, uh, that'll help you appreciate uh, what the Quran is all about, what the message of the Quran is. Um, that's the hope, so let's just start. God willing, we're gonna be starting at chapter one here. Uh, this is Brother Gans Translation, the Quran and Complete Revelation. And I'm gonna be on reader.cronite.com, that's where you can access his translation in a basically a mobile friendly format if you will. So let's begin, this is the opening, Al Fatihah. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful. Praise belongs to God, the Lord of all creation. The Almighty, merciful, master of the day of judgment. Thee alone do we serve, and from thee alone do we seek help. Guide thou us on the straight path, the path of those whom thou hast favored, not of those who incur wrath, nor of those who go astray. So this is the opening chapter of the Quran. And uh, just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things here. First of all, we're asking God's help that he guide us to the straight path and we're gonna be looking at this straight path in the Quran, it's already outlined in the Quran. And um, really, there are three groups of people here, I wanna bring your attention to verse seven here. There's three groups of people and these, these groups will open up in chapter two. So the first is that the path of those whom thou hast favored, so these are the favored. Not of those who incur wrath, so that's the second group, they have incurred wrath from God. And the third group is those who are astray. So let's go to the next chapter. This is chapter two, Al Baqarah. In the name of God, the Almighty and merciful. Alif Lam Mim. That is the writ about which there is no doubt, a guidance to those of prudent fear. So this, tha- that is the Al Kitab is the Arabic. And the Al Kitab is the Alif Lam Mim, now obviously Alif Lam Mim are just symbols, they don't really have a meaning to them. Uh, this is the Muktaat. And uh, the Quran is an exposition of the Al Kitab, that's what it says elsewhere in the Quran, so the Quran is now opening up this Al Kitab, Alif Lam Mim. So this is the Al Kitab, Alif Lam Mim. And the Quran is going to be opening it up for us and giving us an exposition, an explanation of it. So this Al Kitab, this writ which is really a set of laws, commandments that God has given us. Uh, the, this writ is a guidance to those of prudent fear. So this is intended for the, those of prudent fear, this Alif Lam Mim, uh, this Kitab. You're gonna see in the Muktaat as we go forward that the Quran is actually separated into books. So wherever this Muktaat shows up, the Alif Lam Mim, Alif Lam Mim Ra, Alif Lam Mim Swad, uh, those are the books. So that's how the Quran differentiates uh, the, the books and then also the Surah is the chapter. So chapter one was Surah one and then chapter two is Surah two, so that's the division of the Quran if you will. So this is a guidance for those of prudent fear and now it's giving us the definition of the prudent fear, who these people are, in Arabic they're called the Muttakin. Those who believe in the unseen and uh, this specifically is gonna open up, the unseen is belief in God in the last day. And uphold the duty and of what we have provided them to spend, so uh, upholding the duty is upholding the commandments that God has given us in the writ, that's what the word uh, Salat means duty, it's not a ritual prayer. And of what you have, of what they have, we have provided them to spend, so spending money in the cause of God, that's a big thing. And those who believe in what was sent down to thee, this is the recipient of the Quran, uh, thee. Um, and sometimes the Quran uses the word thee in a generic sense, as in someone who was reading the Quran. Uh, but regardless, the, here it's talking about the recipient of the Quran who is Muhammad and uh, the Quran was sent down to him. So they believe in what was sent down to Muhammad, that is the Quran, and what was sent down before thee, before Muhammad, which was the Torah and the Injil. And of the hereafter, they are certain. So the, this is the criteria for the Muttakin. Those are upon guidance from their Lord and it is they who are the successful. Now I want you to note here, it says successful, it doesn't say successful in the afterlife or successful in this life, they are the successful, so the, they're successful everywhere is, is my point here. Those who ignore warning, this is the Inna Lazina Kafadu. Um, which I'll explain a little bit here, but let's just go on, it is the same to them whether thou hast warned them or thou hast not warned them, they do not believe. God has sealed their hearts and over their hearing and over their sight is a covering and they have a great punishment, so these are, this Allazina Kafadu, this is just a generic term for those people who don't believe. And uh, because they have disbelief in the signs of God that are around them, so their hearts have been sealed. And uh, it is the same whether they are warned or not warned, they do not believe. Um, just to go back, the first group was those upon whom God has bestowed blessings, the second group was those uh, let's go back here, I just wanna connect this. So the first group was the Muttakin, the path of those whom thou hast favored, which we have already looked at and now we're looking at the Allazina Kafadu, not of those who incur wrath, so they have incurred uh, wrath from God. And uh, the final group is gonna be those who go astray and their description will come later, so that's where we're at. So these are the Allazina Kafadu, their uh, characteristics are given here. And then we move on to the, the third group, those who are stray. And of men are some who say, we believe in God and the last day, but they are not believers. They would deceive God and those who heed warning, but they deceive only themselves and they perceive not. In their hearts is disease, so God has increased their disease and for them is a painful punishment because they have lied. So these are hmm, these are the worst of all the people because these people are trying to deceive um, God and the Allazina Amanu, those who heed warning and this will be opened up later, who these people are, the, those who heed warning. But anyway, these are the uh, the, these are the, the most insidious of the, all the, the lot. But they deceive only themselves and they perceive not, in their hearts is disease, so God has increased their disease and for them is a painful punishment because they have lied. And when it is said to them, work not corruption in the land, they say, we are but those who do right. In truth, it is they who are the workers of corruption, but they perceive not. And when it is said to them, believe as mankind has believed, they say, shall we believe as the foolish have believed? In truth, it is they who are the foolish, but they know not. I want you to remember this word foolish because we're gonna see the treatment, uh, we're gonna see that people are referred to as fools and later down the line. Um, anyway, so this group, uh, when they told them to believe as mankind does believe, as in a generic sense, you know, mankind believes uh, those who believe, um, they submit to God. So they're being told, you know, th- this is no specialized cult, this is just a general religion. The doctrine of God is general, as in believe in God on the last day. So their, their answer is that shall we believe as the foolish have believed? Uh, and the reason for that is that because they are arrogant. In truth, it is they who are the foolish, but they know not, they think they are superior, they have a doctrine that i- is specific that is, you know, better than the gen- what the generality of mankind believes. Um, but in truth, they are the ones who are foolish. And when they meet those who heed warning, they say, we believe, but when they are alone with the Satans, they say, we are with you, we were only mocking. God mocks them and increases them in wandering blindly in their inordinancy. Those are they who brought, who bought error at the price of guidance, so their transaction profited not and they were not guided. The reason they bought error at the price of guidance hmm, leads us to believe that they have guidance, uh, but they're not willing to follow it. They have guidance from God, but they have uh, basically bartered it for the life of this world. And their transaction does not profit them even though they think it does. Their likeness is as the likeness of one who kindled the fire when it had illuminated what was around about him. God took away their light and left them in darkness, they do not see, see their likeness is one who kindles a fire, so at one time they had guidance, but they now are in darkness because God took away their light and left them in darkness. Deaf, dumb, blind, so they will not return. So their faith is sealed basically. Or like a thunder growl from the sc- thunder cloud from the sky wherein is darkness and thunder and lightning, they put their fing- fingers in their ears against the thunderbolts in fear of death. But God encompasses the false claimers of guidance, so this is the Al Kafirun. Uh, but again, it's translating it as false claimers of guidance, because this is a specific group within the general unbelievers, in the un- in the Allazina Kafadu, this is a specific group. The Al Kafirun, so that's why we have to make a distinction. To continue, the lightning knife snatches away their sight, whenever it gives them light, they walk therein, and when it darkens over them, they stand still. And had God willed, he would have taken away their hearing and their sight, God is over all things powerful. So God has the power to basically blind them and, and make them dumb, make them deaf, but uh, you know, he's allowed them grace to continue in their misguided. Now it opens up, this is the address to mankind. Oh mankind, serve your Lord who created you and those before you that you might be in prudent fear. Now question arises, what does that mean, serve? Because uh, religions tend to make service into ritual, into a form of, you know, certain activities, movements, but we're gonna see what that means, serve your Lord, and we're gonna see later down the line what that means, what that entails. To continue, who made the earth for you a couch and the sky a structure and sent down from the sky water, then brought there by fruits as provision for you, so make not equals to God when you know. And this is really the key of it, that we are not to ascribe partnership to God or make anything equal to God, because God is the one who did all of this for us, so we need to be completely devoted to him and serve him alone. And if you are in doubt about what we have sent down upon our servant, then bring a Surah, the light thereof and call your witnesses other than God if you be truthful. So this is a challenge, bring, bring a chapter like Al Baqarah, uh, if you are in doubt about what God has sent down. And um, I don't wanna get too much into this, but really the, wha- what God is saying here is that we need to, i- if you're gonna challenge this, then you need to produce something like this, you need, i- i- it should have ordinances, it should have uh, clear proofs, it should uh, give you the best guidance. It should uh, give you some knowledge of the unseen, this is all what a Surah contains, a chapter contains. Um, so you need to bring something like that and you also need to bring witnesses. And the reason God is saying other than God is because God has already testified that he has sent down uh, the Quran and we're gonna look at that when we go on that verse, but anyway, so God has already testified, so his testimony is that this is from God, so you need to bring witnesses other than God. And remember, God's testimony uh, obviously overrules any other testimony, so you're gonna fail, really that's the point. But if you do not and you will not, then be in prudent fear of the fire whose fuel is man and stones, prepared for the false claimers of guidance. Uh, Al Kafirun, so I, yeah, I want you to pay attention to this because the Al Kafirun is a specific subset of the Allazina Kafadu. Those who are the unbelievers, this is a subs- specific subset of them. Um, and also uh, God warns us that we need to fear the fire whose fuel is man and stones and the reason stones is used here, my understanding is because uh, all religions at their heart worship stones. It's Islam or Christianity or whatever, they all have statues, they all have, you know, the Muslims have the Kaaba. The Christians worship uh, the statue of Jesus Christ. Uh, I mean now, y- you know, it's changed over the years, but really all, all of these religions, they have the stone worship at their core, I mean Hinduism all, obviously has that. Um, if you know anything about Judaism, they also um, pray towards that wall, so uh, this is central, stones, so be careful of uh, worshiping stones because they are going to be the fire along with men. And bear thou glad tidings to those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, see it's talking about deeds here, it's not about rituals, so you have to do righteous deeds and God willing, we'll see what those deeds are. That they have gardens beneath which rivers flow, whenever they are provided with the fruit thereof, they say, this is what we were provided with before and they are given thereby a likeness and they have their purified spouses and they abide therein eternally. And this is, this is, I think, very poignant because it's saying that what is provided them, they say that it, we were given thereby a likeness in the, in the wo- worldly life, so they have good in this life and they have good in the hereafter. It's not that you're gonna be starving here, you're gonna get all the good things here and exclusively on the day of judgment in the paradise, in the garden, you'll have them um, exclusively for the believers. To continue, this is verse twenty-six, God is not ashamed to strike a similitude be it of a gnat or what is above it. Then as for those who heed warning, they know that is the truth from their Lord and as for those who ignore warning, they say, what means God by this similitude, he leads astray many thereby and he guides many thereby and he leads astray thereby only the perfidious. Uh, we're gonna stop off here, so uh, God is saying that, you know, he can create, he can strike a similitude and then he'll give an example, be it of a gnat or what is above it. And interestingly, there is a similitude of a fly, uh, that it snatches, then the people, it cannot recover what the fly snatched. So that similitude is spread in the Quran, just trying to show you how the Quran self-references itself, it, it, uh, you know, if you look into it close enough, you'll see that it's referencing other verses, so this is one of those things. Okay, now we're gonna look at the definition for the perfidious, this is the Al Fasik, Al Fasikun. Those who break the covenant with God after its agreement and sever what God commanded to be joined and work corruption in the land, it is they who are the losers. And now we're gonna later on see the treatment of the children of Israel who also broke their agreement with God, so they are the Al Fasikun. Well, I mean, they are one of the Al Fasikun, but the Al Fasikun are any peoples who break the covenant with God after its ratification and sever what God commands to be joined therein, as in, you know, God commands us to um, to take the best from his scripture. So he, uh, the disjoining part is important because uh, what they do is that they tear asunder. Um, and they follow some parts and don't follow the other parts of the writ. And work corruption in the land, so this is obviously talking about spreading corruption, killing, slaughter, all that stuff. It is they who are the losers. How can you deny God, when you were dead, he gave you life, then will he give you death, then will he give you life and to him will you be returned? He is that created for you, all that is in the earth, then he directed himself to the sky and fashioned them seven heavens and he knows all things. So, just so you know, the, the model that we've given, as in the earth is a spinning ball and hurtling through space, etc., this is not supported by the Quran. Um, God is telling us how, how everything is structured, he created all that is in the earth and then he directed himself to the sky and uh, the heaven and then he partitioned it into seven heavens and so one o- one atop of each other, really that's how it is. Okay, now we move on to the episode with the uh, God commanding the angels to do some certain thing. Verse thirty, and when thy Lord said to the angels, I am placing in the earth a successor, they said, will thou place therein one who will do harm therein and shed blood, while we give glory with thy praise and hallowed thee? He said, I know what you know not. And they thought, and he thought, Adam, the names, all of them. Then he presented them to the angels and said, inform me of the names of these if you be truthful. They said, glory be to thee, we have no knowledge save what thou hast taught us, thou art the knowing, the wise. He said, oh Adam, inform thou them of their names, and when he had informed them of their names, he said, said I not to you that I know the unseen of the heavens and the earth and I know what you reveal and what you have concealed? Okay, now this is interesting, uh, actually, it's one of those things that you have to really kinda think about and say, read it over, you know, wha- what is this all about? So basically, God is placing in, on the earth a successor and the angels question God, saying that you create someone who will do harm therein and shed blood. Um, while we give glory with thy praise and hallowed thee. And he said, I know what you know not, so you would expect God to tell what he knows, but he doesn't, see that's, that's the whole thing, it's just, that's known to God. Uh, but he does give us a hint here, he says, and he thought, Adam, the names, all of them. So Adam was given knowledge and then he presented them to the angels and said, inform me of the names of these if you are truthful, so the knowledge that was given to Adam was the names of everything. And um, basically that he, he was given, you know, um, i- if you know how, how, I guess, how knowledge works, you al- you always start out with naming something, it is a taxonomy and then you move forward, so this is really what it is, that he was given the names of things and then he could learn more about them as he uh, thought about it, reflected about it and did the experimentations and all that, so this is really, he was given sort of like the stepping stone. Um, anyway, to continue, it says, uh, they said glory be to thee, so they were not given the knowledge that Adam was given, he was given the knowledge of all, all of them, the names of all of them. And uh, a- uh, then God said to Adam, inform them of their names and he informed them. So he said, said I not to you that I know the unseen of the heavens and the earth, so basically, what I take from this is that Adam was given knowledge and this knowledge is what basically prevents him, well, it's a check to make sure that he does the right thing because now he has knowledge, so he needs to act i- in the best manner, so obviously, if he had, is knowledgeable, he fears God, then he will not act, uh, he will not harm and shed blood. Um, because at the end of the day, the, the knowledge is, is, is the knowledge, knowledge of the law, I mean, the law is the, what's giving us the checks and balances, right? So, okay, now here God says, and I know what you reveal and what you have concealed, he's talking to the angels here, so what, what are they concealing? To continue, and when we said to the angels, submit to Adam, then they submitted. Not so Iblees, he refused and had waxed proud and was of the false claimers of guidance. So Iblees, he refused to submit to Adam. Uh, and right here, you can tell that this is not an act of worship, see the, the word Sajad that is used here, which is usually translated as prostration, that's not what this word can mean, because then you're saying that God commanded the angels to submit, to, to prostrate to Adam in the act of worship, that's what you're saying. So obviously here it means, means to lower oneself, as in, don't act proudly, don't be, uh, you know, submit to Adam, he is above you. Um, but Iblees, since he was proud, he refused and this is one of the characteristics of the Al Kafirun, now we're seeing here that they're proud. And if you remember the fo- the Al Kafirun, they hide uh, their disbelief. This is one of the things that we learned when we looked at the Al Kafirun, their definition. So Iblees was of the Al Kafirun. He didn't become of the Al Kafirun, he was of the Al Kafirun, that's why God says, I know what you reveal and what you have concealed or what you conceal, so he already ni- he already knew that Iblees was of the Al Kafirun, he was this, this whole thing exposed him for what he was. And we said, oh Adam, dwell thou and thy wife in the garden and eat thereof freely, wheresoever you will, but approach not this tree lest you be of the wrongdoers. Now this tree is the tree of Zaqum, which is in hell and um, we're talk- gonna talk more about that as we encounter this tree elsewhere in the Quran, but just know that this is the tree of Zaqum and it is uh, um, um, it means a trial for mankind really. Uh, and Adam obviously failed this trial because he ate from this tree, uh, to continue. But the Satan caused them to fall there from, after Adam and his wife ate from the tree. They were caused to fall there from and turned them out of what they were in, this is the garden, they were basically kicked out of there. And we said, get you all down, an enemy to one another and for you in the earth are dwelling place and provision for your time. Okay, so now here, get you all down, I take it to mean that God is now talking to Satan and Adam and his wife, that you all need to go down and you are an enemy to one another, obviously, uh, man's enemy is Satan. Adam's enemy is Satan, these are sort of like the hmm, Adam is on one's, Adam, Adam and hmm, Satan, they're two separate creatures, right, and then now they're both being thrown down um, to live on the earth. Then Adam receive, then received Adam words from his Lord and he turned towards him, he is the accepting of repentance, the merciful, so Adam received guidance from God. Um, that he, 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 he understood that uh, God can forgive and he, you know, they say, we have wronged our souls elsewhere in the Quran, so so when they uh, asked God for forgiveness and they accept, they basically said, look, we, we made a mistake, then they were free, they were forgiven by God. We said, get you down from it altogether, so now this altogether here, see in, in Arabic it's Minhajamiun, so now we're talking about Adam and his progeny. So basically the command was repeated, but now it includes Adam and his progeny. And if there comes to you guidance from me, whoso follows my guidance, no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. So this is really the key of it, this uh, that God will keep sending down guidance and whoso follows his guidance, they will not fear, nor will they grieve. But those who ignore warning and deny our proofs, those are the companions of the fire, therein, they abide eternally. Or if you wanna just do, but those who deny and also deny God's proofs. Uh, those are the companions of fire, therein they abide eternally. Okay, now we move on to the addressing of children of Israel and uh, you have to bear in mind that children of Israel were the people to whom Mo- Moses, Moses came and they were given the Al Kitab as well, Moses was given Al Kitab. And so the address is to them now because they need to respond to the messenger of God, Muhammad. Verse forty, oh children of Israel, remember my favor, wherewith I favored you and fulfill the covenant with me and I will fulfill the covenant with you and me, be you in fear of me, we're gonna look at the covenant here that God made with the children of Israel and that they failed that. And believe in what I have sent down, confirming what is with you and be not the first to deny it and sell not my proofs at a cheap price and me, be you in prudent fear of me. So God is saying that uh, what he believed, to believe in the Quran, which confirms what they have within their possession, which is the Torah. And be not the first to deny it, the Quran, and sell not my proofs at a cheap price. And clothe not truth with vanity, nor conceal the truth when you know. And uphold the duty and render the purity and be lowly with the lowly. Now this is the first occurrence of uh, duty, Waqim Salat, see uphold the duty, so God is commanding the well, it's the second occurrence, but this is in reference to the children of Israel. And so the children of Israel, obviously, they never did any uh, Islamic ritual prayer as far as I know and they don't do it, so this obviously is not referring to an Islamic ritual prayer, it's talking about upholding duty, which we'll see is the commandments that they were given. Um, and now are again being sent down. Enjoying your virtue upon mankind and forget yourselves when you recite the writ, will you then not use reason, see that, and this connects with the earlier parts. See, they were supposed to uphold the commandments of God in upholding the duty and that they are enjoying virtue upon mankind, virtue just means good deeds um, in the Quranic context. And forget yourselves when you recite the writ, so you, they are reciting the Al Kitab because they have it, they had it at the time of revelation, I don't know what the status is now, but anyway, God is admonishing them, you're gonna see this continue on. I also want you to pay attention that you could put, in a lot of places, you could put the Muslims in the same um, where, where it's saying children of Israel, if you just place Muslims, uh, they're doing the same exact thing, so you know, that's something that I, when I first read the Quran, I was really amazed that it's, you know, even though it's all about children of Israel, it's actually, to my mind, it was talking about, it was condemning the Muslims. To continue, and seek help in patience and duty and it is hard save for the humble. Those who consider that they will meet their Lord and that to him they are returning. Oh children of Israel, remember my favor, wherewith I favored you and that I preferred you above all mankind. And be in prudent fear of a day, no soul will avail a soul anything, nor will intercession be accepted from it, nor will compensation be taken from it, nor will they be helped. And when we delivered you from the house of Pharaoh, they were afflicting you with an evil punishment, slaughtering your sons and sparing your women, and in that was a great trial from your Lord. And when we divided for you the sea and delivered you and drowned the house of Pharaoh and you were looking on. And when we appointed for Moses forty nights, uh, this is in reference to Mo- Moses uh, going up uh, and been given, going up to the mountain and where he was given the Al Kitab after he prepared for forty nights, the forty nights. And when we appointed for Moses forty nights, then you took up the calf while he was away and you were wrongdoers, so this will be, this will be treated later. Then we pardoned you after that, that you might be grateful. And when we gave Moses the writ, he was given the Al Kitab then, and the division, the, the, the Al Fulkhan, which is actually, which uh, the Quran also refers to itself as the Al Fulkhan and basically what it is, is, it's the division between truth and falsehood, between right and wrong, really that's what it is. That you might be guided, and when Moses said to his people, oh my people, you have wronged your souls by your taking up the calf, so turn to your creator and kill yourselves. That is best for you in the sight of your creator. Then he turned towards you, he is the accepting of repentance, the merciful. Now why Moses told his people to kill themselves, this has to do with uh, basically trying to avert God's punishment uh, which uh, had become binding upon them because they took up the calf, started worshiping it. And if you want more information, I suggest you look at Brother Gans' work, The God Protocol, in which he treats of this extensively. Anyway, God turned towards them, he is the accepting of repentance, the merciful. And when you said, oh Moses, we will not believe thee until we see God openly and the thunderbolt took you and you were looking on, so they were killed anyway because then they continued to, you know, just cross the line. Then we raised you up after your death that you might be grateful. And we caused the cloud to overshadow you and we sent down upon you manna and quails, eat of the good things that we have provided you and they wronged us not, but they wronged their souls. And when we said, enter this city and eat freely of it where, wherever you will. And when we said, enter this city and eat freely of it, where whatsoever you will, and enter the gate in submission. And say a mitigation, we will forgive you your offenses, and we will and will increase the doors of good. And those who did wrong changed the saying to other than what was said to them. So we sent down a scourge from the sky upon those who did wrong because they were perfidious. You've already looked at this word perfidious, who these people are, like what their characteristics are. I just wanna point out that they were changing the saying to other than what was said to them, so this changing. Um we're gonna see more of this, they're gonna be twisting the words of God and really, um this is kind of giving you. A preview of of what the Muslims will do with their scripture, God's scripture, they also. Twist the verses of God to suit their agenda or their rein desires. And when Moses sought water for his people, so we said, strike thou with thy staff the rock. Then they gushed there from twelve springs, each people knew his drinking place. Eat and drink of the provision of God, and commit not evil in the earth, working corruption. And when you said, oh Moses, we will not endure one food, so call thou to thy lord for us, that he will bring forth for us of what the earth grows, of its green herbs. And its cucumbers and its garlic and its lentils and its onions, he said, would you exchange for what is worse, what is better? Get you down to Egypt and you will have what you have asked, and humiliation and wretchedness were pitched upon them, and they incurred wrath from God. For it is that they denied the proofs of God, and they killed the prophets without cause, for it is that they opposed and exceeded all bounds. Just wanna bring your attention to the fact that they said we will not endure one food, when actually they were given two types of food, but uh. They didn't like that. Those who heed a warning, those who heed warning, and those who hold to Judaism and the Christians and the Sabans. Whoso believes in God and the last day and works righteousness, they have their reward with their lord, and no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. Now, uh this is really, eh this is one of the important pieces in in the text that we're reading because. Here it's making this claim, well, God is telling us that i- if you believe in God and the last day, this is what the word. Uh I mean, to those who heed warning, you know, they believe in God and the last day, and those who hold to Judaism, so these are the people who. Are the uh those who hold to the religion of Judaism, as in they are Jews and the Christians and the Sabans, and. Now, people get hung up on this Sabians, but really what it is, is it could be anything, you know, any, you could put any religion in there, as long as the religion. Uh a- as long as you believe in God, one God, and the last day. See, that's really the key of it, and you work righteousness, then you have your reward with your lord. So it's nothing to do with religions, nothing to have to do with sectarianism, you can belong to any religion, but you need to believe in God in the last day and do good deeds. See, this is what the text is saying, we forget that. We start, you know, Muslims see, say, oh, you have to convert to Islam and all this stuff, it's not, that's, the Quran is categorically against that, Quran is saying. You have to believe in God in the last day and do good deeds, this is really all that's needed to, you won't, you won't fear, you won't grieve. And when we took your agreement and raised the mount above you, hold fast what we have given you, and remember what is therein that you might be in prudent fear, this is obviously. Um referring to the children of Israel, because that's what the narrative is about right now, and when we took your agreement, so God took an agreement from them. And raised the mount above them, that they need to hold fast what God has given them, which is the Al Kitab, which was given to Musa. And remember what is therein, that you might be in prudent fear, so this is really what it's about, and just so you know, Muslims have. Are not holding fast to the Quran, they don't remember what is therein, and this is one of the agreements that God took with the children of Israel. Just trying to show you the parallels between children of Israel and the Muslims today. Then you turned away after that, and were it not for the bounty of God upon you and his mercy, you would have been among the losers. And you had known those among you transgressed the Sabbath, and we said to them, be despised apes. This is the day of rest that the Jews have to observe. This part of the law. And we made an exemplary lesson for their time, and that following it, and admonition for to those of prudent fear. And when Moses said to his people, God commands that you sacrifice a hafer, they said, does thou take us in mockery? He said, I seek refuge in God lest I be of the ignorant. So now Moses is telling his people that they need to sacrifice a hafer, why? Because if you remember, they were worshipping a calf, so this is to them, this is something that. Uh they're not, they're not willing to do, this is a big test for them. So they start asking questions um to somehow, I guess, delay the inevitable, this is how it seems to be progressing, and also. They're looking for an excuse not to do it, they're nitpicking, and this is one of the things that the religionists, they love to do, they always. Try to nitpick on things, I mean, the religion of Islam, really, that's what it is, they're so specific about things. If it's a general command, they want to know the what, when, where, and they'll keep on asking these questions, and this is what I get from this story, is that don't. Ask too many questions, what God is commanding you to do, you just do it, to the best of your ability, to the best of your understanding, don't go in there and try to start. Picking on things, cause you're making, gonna make your life difficult, as they did, because we're gonna see in this whole story what happens is that. Because they're not willing to sacrifice the hafer, and then God is giving them more specifics. They make it, it's ma- he's making it more difficult for them to find the hafer, to sacrifice first of all, and then ultimately, what the the hafer they end up sacrificing is their. Golden calf, that's what I see, so to continue, they said, call thou to thy lord for us, that he may explain to us what she is. He said, he says, she is a hafer, neither old nor young, middling between them, so do what you are commanded, basically, the best of the best. Uh the cream of the crop is what now i- is gonna go towards, and eh like I said, this is the golden calf, which uh. They just made their life difficult. They said, call thou to thy lord for us, that he may explain to us what her hue is, he said, he says, she is a yellow hafer. Bright is her hue, making glad the beholders. They said, call thou to thy lord for us, that he may explain to us what she is, hafer seem alight to us, and if God wills, we will be guided. He said, he says, she is a hafer, neither broken to plow the earth nor to water the tilt, perfect, no blemish on her. They said, now hast thou brought the truth, then they sacrificed her, but they had hardly done it. And when you kill the souls, you despair about it, but God was to bring forth what you concealed, and we said, strike it in some of them. Thus gives God life to the death and shows his proofs to you that you might use reason. Then your hearts became hardened after that, and they are like stones or harder, and among stones is that from which gush forth rivers, and among them are those. That split and water issues forth, and among them are those that fall down from fear of God, and God is not unmindful of what you do. See, this is very interesting that this 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 whole thing about the heart becoming hardened, because if you know anything about religionists, they are very. Rigid, they are very stubborn, um they don't have any compassion. Uh they're, they wanna follow the rules to the letter, and they have no room for compassion, for mercy, for flexibility. And so that's what happened to them, their hearts became hard, um so that's not good. Do you hope that they will believe you, and a faction among them had heard the word of God, then twisted it after they had understood it, when they knew. Obviously, this is referring to the previous episode where they changed the word after. Uh God told them to enter that uh town. So, but again, I wanna bring your attention to the fact that the Muslims do the same thing, they take verses out of context from the Quran, they use the Hadith literature to basically. Uh explain the Quran or to abrogate the verses of of God, and this is what here. To me, that's what the understanding is, that you know, these groups, they always twist God's word to basically bring in their own. Interpretation, their own religion into God's scripture. And when they meet those who heed warning, they say, we believe, this is a classic Al Kafirun thing to do, right? But when they are alone with one another, they say, do you recount to them what God has revealed to you, that they might argue against you before your lord? Will you then not use reason? Or know they not that God knows what they keep secret and what they make known? So if they say that, you know, that God has revealed to us something, and then they should know. That in that uh revelation, that God is saying he knows everything, so. They, he knows what they keep secret or the what they proclaim, so they should know this, then why are they saying this, when they already know that this is true? And among them are those unschooled, they know not the writ, save rein desires, and they are only assuming. Now, this is the Ummi Yun that Muslims say means the those who are illiterate, but it's not what this means. This word Ummi Yun, unschooled, means those who don't have knowledge of the writ. And this is what it's saying, and among them are those unschooled, so among the children of Israel are those unschooled, they don't have knowledge of the writ, they know. Not the writ, save rein desires, so they are only guessing as to what the writ can say contains, this is really what I get from this. Uh because if you talk to, um I can only give you examples for Muslims, because that's sort of my people, right, so. As far as Muslims go, you know, they'll say, oh, you know, the Quran says this, or this, I've heard this, and they're just making up stuff, so this is what it's saying, that. The it's their rein desires that they think the writ contains, but the writ contains is what the writ contains, you have to read it, you have to learn, and that's what it means. Verse seventy-nine, so what do those who write the writ with their hands then say, this is from God? That they might sell at a cheap price, so what do them for what their hands have written, and what do them for what they earn? You could take the whole Hadith literature and put it in here, because this is, the Hadith literature is written by the hands of men, and. They, through an indirect way, they associated with God, they say that God revealed this, and in the case of the Hadith could see, they are saying that directly that. This didn't make it in the Quran, but this is revelation from God, so uh what do them? And they say, the fire will not touch us save days numbered, say thou, have you taken a covenant with God? For God will not fail in his covenant, or do you ascribe to God what you know not? Rarely, whoso earns evil and his offenses have encompassed him, those are the companions of fire, therein they abide eternally, so. Those who say, they say, the people who are unlearned, they say, uh the fire will not touch us save days numbered. Muslims say the same thing. Muslims have Hadiths that talk about, you know, that you only be there for a certain amount of days, and then Muhammad's gonna be given the authority to go in and take you out from. Uh the fire, I mean, most people know that, and Muslims think that's what's gonna happen, but this is not in the writ. God makes it clear who's gonna make it and who's not gonna make it. Anyway, to continue, verse eighty-two, and those who heed warning and do righteous deeds, those are the companions of the garden, therein they abide eternally. See, again, this is generic, Al Lazina Amanu is someone who believes in God and last day and does righteous deeds. They they don't, they don't belong to a religion. And when we took an agreement of the children of Israel, serve not save God. And towards parents' good conduct, and towards kin, and the fatherless, and the poor, and speak kindly to men, and uphold the duty, and render the purity. Then you turn away, save a few among you, and you are averse, so this was part of the agreement. And when we took your agreement, shed not your blood, and turn not your own out of your homes, then you affirm and bore witness. Then are you those who kill your own, and turn a faction among you out of their homes, assisting one another against them in sin and enmity. And if they come to you as captives, you ransom them, but unlawful for you was their expulsion, do you believe in part of the writ and deny part? Then what is the reward of him among you who does that, save disgrace in the life of this world? And eh on the day of resurrection, they are sent back to the harshest punishment, and God is not unmindful of what you do. I wanna bring your attention to this part here, it says, do you believe in part of the writ and deny part, now Muslims have this understanding, belief is something, okay, I believe. I believe in this, I believe in this, I believe in God, I believe in last day, I believe in the Quran, but what does that mean here in the, in this context? Obviously, it's meaning here implementation, see, it says, do you believe in part of the writ and deny part, so do you implement part of the writ? And do you not implement part of the writ, see, that's what it means, so belief is is not just making a claim or just saying, I believe, it's actually implementing. So you have to implement, so they're not implementing part of the Al Kitab that is given to them, and they are implementing some of the. Writ that's given to them, and the result is that those who do this, the reward is that disgrace in the life of this world. Now, you have the Muslims here who are disgraced in the life of this world, because they also pick and choose from the Al Kitab in the Quran. Uh they implement certain things and they don't implement certain things, so that's what I think it means. Those are they who bought the life of this world at the price of the hereafter, so the punishment will not be lightened for them, nor will they be helped. Now, this is really what it is, right, because eh for material advantages, you're willing to basically throw God's book, the Al Kitab behind your back. I mean, if you wanna take example right now, in present world, I mean, Muslims, they are uh wholeheartedly um getting into. Uh interest, viva, usury. Um they've thrown part of the book in the Quran, wh- where it, the the usury is forbidden. And when I say usury, I mean interest, usury, any anything you make over your principle is viva according to Quran, so. They've thrown that part uh of the book, because it's not advantageous to them. To continue, verse eighty-seven, and we gave Moses the writ, and sent the messengers after him, and we gave Jesus, son of Mary, the clear signs, and strengthen. Strengthen him with the spirit of holiness. Is it not that whenever there came to you a messenger with what your souls desired not, you waxed proud, and a faction you denied, and a faction you killed? And they say our hearts recovered, nay, God has cursed them for their denial, so little it is that they believe. And when there came to them a writ from God confirming what was with them. And they before sought victory over those who ignore warning, then when there came to them what they recognized, they denied it, but the curse of God is upon the. False clamors of guidance, now you could take this in a general sense, as in the Al Kitab, that's in the Quran, the commandments are confirming. The commandments that they have in their Al Kitab, because it's the same Al Kitab, or you could take it a little bit more specifically, and I'll show you, you know, how how how. Uh to me, this really popped out, because uh if you understand that the Kitab is is the uh. Alif Lam Mim, Alif Lam Mim Sal, Alif Lam Mim Ra, uh and we're right now, Alif Lam Mim, so it's treating of of this um section. Um you're gonna see that later on, it's gonna talk about that God had ordained for them an eye for an eye, and. Um a tooth for a tooth, and you find that in the Torah, so you know, it is, it's. To me, that's also like, you could take it both ways, general and specific, as in the, there's gonna be a little bit of a snippet of the law that's given to Musa in here. And that is confirming what they have, so you could take it either way, both both interpretations, I think, are valid. But anyway, so the whole point is there, is this, that they uh when the Al Kitab from God reached them. And this Al Kitab is confirming what is with them, and they were already looking, they were already asking for victory. Over the general unbelievers, uh and now, you know, something came from God, the scripture, and a messenger to help them. Then they recognized it not, and they uh denied it, and the curse is upon them, because they. Not willing to assist the messenger and not willing to believe that the book has been revealed. Again, to this uh messenger, and the reason is given why. Evil is that for which they sold themselves, denying what God sent down through sectarian zealotry. That God should send down of his bounty upon whom he wills of his servants. So they incurred wrath upon wrath, and for the false cameras of guidance is a humiliating punishment, so they were not willing to accept Muhammad. Uh as the messenger of God, because uh he was not. Of them, really. And when they said to them, believe in what God has sent down, they say, we believe in what was sent down to us, and they deny what is beyond that. Beyond it, when it is the truth confirming what is with them. So say now, why then killed you the prophets of God before, if you be believers, so this is a question, why, why were you then killing the prophets of God, and. I I'm gonna break this down a little bit, so it is said to them, believe in what God has sent down, as in the Quran, they're talking about children of Israel here. And they say, we believe in what is sent down to us, so they're only believing in the Torah. And. God is saying, well, this is. This is confirming what you have, so if you say you believe in that, then it it follows you have to believe in this, because this is only confirming what you have. So you can't say, you're basically denying your own book, because if you, if you truly believed eh in the Torah, and then eh and the Al Kitab. And then the Quran came to confirm it, then uh you would believe in it too, because it confirms what you have. So, and then if it's a ask the question, why then did you kill the prophets of God, because the prophets, they're they're the um, they're the inheritors of the writ. They are the ones who implement the writ, this is their function, so they, God is saying, then why did you kill the prophets? Uh who were basically implementing the writ you had, if you were believers, if you believed in your writ, why did you kill them, because they were commanding you, it wasn't the writ. So obviously, you don't believe, that's really what is is the main takeaway from this. And Moses came to you with clear signs, then you took up the calf while he was away, and you were wrongdoers. So obviously, we know from the story of Moses and Pharaoh, and they'll be treated later in the Quran, where Moses came with many signs. And obviously, the biggest sign was uh their enemy was drowned, uh Pharaoh was drowned by God, so. They they had clear signs, and they still took up the calf, uh so they were wrongdoers. And when we took your agreement and raised the mount above you, hold fast what we give you and listen, hold fast, again, this comes up again, hold fast, this is the second time. This is how important it is to hold fast to God's revelation, Muslims don't, see, this is really I'm trying to get at, they don't read it, they don't, they don't. They don't, they don't know what's in it, really, hold fast what we give you and listen, they said, we hear and we oppose. And they were filled with drinking the calf in their hearts for their denial. Or they were made to drink the calf in their hearts for their denial, basically, that they, because they denied. Um they had a love for the calf, uh for their, for their god, the statue, uh the idol, and um. You know, the obvious correlation is again with the Kaaba, eh as I told you, that's also stone structure that the Muslims worship. Say thou, evil is what your faith enjoins upon you if you be believers. Say thou, if the abode of the hereafter with God be for you to the exclusion of other men, then wish for death if you be truthful. Now, this is something that the Muslims believe as well, that only the Muslims are gonna make it. So there's nothing like that, but never will they wish for it because of what their hands have sent ahead and. So there's nothing like that, but never will they wish for it because of what their hands have sent ahead and God knows, knows the wrongdoers, so they won't wish for that. See, see, all religionists are kind of the same in the um worldview, they don't. They really love this world, they're not gonna wish for that, even though they say, oh, we, we're looking for the hereafter, they're really not. And thou will find them the greediest of men for life, and of those who ascribe a partnership. One of them wishes to be granted life of a thousand years, but it will not remove him from the punishment where he be to granted. Were he to be granted life and God sees what they do. Say thou, whoso is an enemy to Gabriel, and he it is that brought it down upon thy heart by the leave of God, confirming what was before it. And as guidance and glad tidings for the believers, so this is the rule that uh came down with the Quran and into. Uh basically, it was revealed to Muhammad to the roof, Jibail. Whoso is an enemy to God and his angels and his messengers and Gabriel and Michael, God is an enemy to the false claimers of guidance. And we have sent down to declare proofs and none deny them save the perfidious. And the clear proofs, this is really the Quran's treatment of the proofs that you see around us, you know, how. We're gonna get to that, God willing, um in this series. Okay, so where were we? Okay, ninety-nine, so verse one hundred. Whenever they made a covenant, did not a faction among them reject it, the truth is most of them do not believe, did not a faction among them reject it, yeah, they did. I mean, we already saw what they did with, with the agreement with God, so they always reject, they always break the covenants they make. This is uh. Again, eh I'm trying to show you that um the Quran is talking about becoming righteous men, becoming men of God in the truest sense of the word. About being sincere to God, it's not talking about rituals and really. The religionists, they're always pushing rituals, and that's all their worldview is, religion i- is just rituals, 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 when. God is talking about, you know, keeping your word and uh making sure that, you know, you um you, you speak kindly to mankind and. Uh ascribe nothing to God. And when they came to them a messenger from God confirming what is with them, a faction among those giving the Rite, cast the Rite of God behind their backs as if they knew not. And they followed what the Satanists recited during the reign of Solomon. And Solomon denied not, but the Satanists denied teaching men sorcery and what was sent down upon the two angels or kings. At Babylon Harut and Marut, and they thought no one until they had said, we are but a means of denial, so deny thou not. Then from them they learned that by which they caused division between a man and his wife, but they harmed no one thereby save by the leave of God. And they learn what harms them and profits them not, knowing well that whoso buys it has in the hereafter no share. And evil is that for which they sold their souls had they but known, so this is talking about um Kabbalah. This is the, the secret teachings of the mystery schools. To continue, and had they believed and been in prudent fear, recompense from God would have been better had they but known. See, this was the criteria, had they believed and been in prudent fear, then what God would have given me would be better, had they but known. Because they don't study the Rite. Oh, you heed warning, say not, attend thou to us, but say look thou upon us and listen, and for the false claimers of guidance is a painful punishment. So don't be uh aggressive, don't um. Basically, don't uh be arrogant towards the messenger. Neither those who ignore warning among the doctors of law nor the idolaters wish that they be sent down upon you any good from your lord. But God chooses for his mercy whom he wills, and God is possessor of tremendous bounty. Okay, now here, this is, the doctor of law is the Ahlul Kitab, which but against is the one who. Uh looked through all the instances of this phrase, Ahlul Kitab, and he came to the conclusion that it means the doctor of law, as in the learned folks, the scholars. Um so the, among them, they are those who ignore warning, see, uh. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if they dress up in a certain manner or they speak those, you know, the, those flowery words, or they say Insha Allah, Masha Allah, whatever. Uh they are among the scholars of Islam, among the doctors of law, among the priests, among the rabbis, there are those who are. The unbelievers, Allah Zina Kafaru, they are, that's what God is saying, that uh that. Among the, the doctor of law, those who disbelieve, those who ignore warning, and the idolaters. Wish that, that nothing be sent down fo- upon you, any, that wish that there be sent down upon you any good from your lord. See, they don't wish it, but God chooses for his mercy whom he wills, and God is possessor of tremendous bounty. Because guidance is from God, really, that's the key, what proof we abolish or cause to be forgotten, we bring one better than it or the like thereof. Knowest thou not that God is over all things powerful? Now Muslims take this to mean uh that this is the abrogation verse in which they use the Hadith literature, they say, okay, the Hadith is abrogating certain verses. The Quran, the Quran is abrogating cer- certain verses from each other, but that's not what it says here. This is talking about the earlier scriptures, that they are being, uh that the proofs in them, the Ayat are being abolished or caused, caused, caused to be forgotten. Because God is bringing in a um, a one better or the like thereof, so the Quran is basically replacing. The previous scriptures, that's what I get from this. Knowest thou not that God to him belongs to the meaning of the heavens and the earth, and you have besides God neither ally nor helper? So you have no helper or ally besides God, this is, this is very important, because we're gonna see this repeated again. If you desire to ask your messenger as Moses was asked before, and whoso exchanges faith for denial has strayed from the right path, so don't question. Uh don't go after, uh don't be like the people of Musa who were asking him all these redundant questions about. How should we, what kind of hafer, what color, you know, what size, what age, don't ask these questions, again, this is a warning. That don't nitpick, don't go around looking for more particulars when something is, a command is given to you, just take it and implement it. To continue verse one oh nine, many among the doctors of law wish to turn you back as atheists after your faith, out of envy from their souls after the tooth has become clear to them. But pardon and forbear until God brings his command, God is over all things powerful. Now, the mention of doctors of law, I think is interesting right here, because it's saying, because i- if you know anything about the doctors of law, the, the religionists, the scholars of Islam or Christianity or whatever. They always love to get into details, and uh you know, it's already been, we have, the, the. We've already been warned that uh those who heed warning, that they're already being warned, that don't ask questions that are redundant, so. I see, I see, I, it's very interesting that now it's talking about the doctor of law right after that. Uh and by asking all these questions, what they're trying to do is to turn you back as atheists. Um to go back to their religions, really. Um but pardon and forbear until God brings his command, God is over all things powerful, uphold the duty and render the purity. And what good you send ahead for your souls, you will find it with God, God sees what you do. So uphold the commandments of God and bring forth the purity. Okay, to continue, now we're talking about the religionists here specifically, and this is very insightful. Because this blows away the whole argument that Muslims have, that the Quran uh is talking about a religion. And the religion has these pillars, and uh we have these ritual prayers and all this stuff. And that we're exclusive, because this is exactly the thing that the Jews and Christians are saying in this narrative, and they're being told, no, it's nothing like that. It's uh, whoso believes in God and last day and does good deeds shall have their reward. And they say, none will enter the garden save such as hold to Judaism or Christians, those are their vain desires, say thou, bring your evidence if you be truthful. Rarely whoso submits his face to God and is a doer of good, he has his reward with his lord, and no fear will be upon them nor will they grieve. And the rab- rabbinic Jews say, the Christians have nothing to stand upon, and the Christians say, the rabbinic Jews have nothing to stand upon when they read the Rite. Thus say those who know not likewise, and God will judge between them on the day of resurrection concerning that wherein they differed. Now. You could replace the Sunni Muslims with the Shia Muslims here, see, and uh this verse would read the same way. They both read the Rite in the Quran, but because they have this separate Hadith literature, they always, you know, fighting, okay, you know, you're going to hell and you're going to hell. This is the same stuff uh that's been going on throughout the ages, it's always about exclusivity. And who is more unjust than he who hinders the places of worship of God, that its name be not mentioned therein and strives to undermine them? Those, it was not for them to enter them save in fear, they have disgrace in the world and they have in the hereafter great punishment. See, this is again key, because religionists, they have their sects, and each sect is basically persecuting the other sect. So even though they have their own places of worship where they are, if they are worshiping God alone. The, they are dedicated to God and remembering his name therein, they will still fight with each other because they don't follow their sect. So this is a warning for them. And to God belong the east and the west, wheresever you turn, there is the face of God, God's, God is encompassing and knowing, see. God, God, uh this whole thing, east and west, like this whole kibla thing, which we're gonna look at later. Where Muslims say you have to pray in this direction, facing the, the stone idol, Makkah Saudi Arabia, and the Jews have their own. Uh kibla, where they say, okay, you have to pray, pray, facing Jerusalem, this is man-made, God belong, to God belongs everything, east and west. Wheresever you turn, there is the face of God, so again, this whole thing is, is just pointless. Uh that you are saying, okay, you have to face a certain direction, or you have to um, you know, follow this religion. And they say, God has taken a son, glory be to him, the truth is, to him belongs what is in the heavens and the earth, all are humbly obedient to him. The originator of the heavens and the earth, and when he decrees a matter, he but says to it, be thou, and it is. Now Christians, they make a big claim about this, you know, uh that Jesus is God's word and, you know, God's word and, you know. What is God's word? Here's God's word right here, be thou, so this is, this is God's word. God, when he decides a matter, he just says to it, be thou, and it is. And those who know not say, oh, that God would but speak to us or approve but come to us. Thus said those before them likewise, their hearts are similar, we have made plain the proofs for people who are certain. Well, and so now this is talking about those people who do not know, um as in they do not know the Rite, they don't know the revelation, because those who know the revelation. God is already speaking to them, I mean, the Quran is God's word, so God, God is addressing you here. And the proof that they are saying, oh, proof but come to us, the proof is here in the Quran. Uh God, eh the proof is around us, the proof's around us, what they're looking for are miracles. And that is something that uh the people like them before them, in the time of Muhammad, also were looking for miracles and. Really, the only sign that you're gonna get, that's gonna be kind of a miracle, is the punishment. Uh the Quran only gives us uh indications of the signs of God around us, and those are. All you need really to believe in God and his omnipotence. So that's why it says, we have made plain the proofs for people who are certain, so those who are certain that this Rite is from God. Uh the proofs are plain for them to see, they're in the, the Rite, they're in the Quran, and you can verify them, you can look up and you can see the stars and the sun and the moon and all this. So to, to them, everything is made clear. We send thee with the truth as a bearer of glad tidings and a warner, and thou will not be questioned about the companions of hell. And never will the rabbinic Jews be pleased with thee, nor will the Christians until thou follow their creed. Say thou, the guidance of God, that is guidance, and if thou follow their vain desires after knowledge which has come to thee. Thou will have against God neither ally nor helper. So, same thing again, the religionists say you have to follow our creed. Uh the Jews say you have to follow our creed, the Christians say you have to follow our creed, and. You know, we can make that connection, like I said, and Muslims say the same thing, you have to follow our religion. When in reality, the guidance of God, that is guidance. And that is their vain desires, if they think that they need to follow a particular religion or sect or whatever to be saved. So don't follow their vain desires after knowledge which has come to thee, which is the Quran. Because you will ha- not have from God any he- ally or helper. Cause God is our only ally and helper, see, so now if you don't have, uh if you don't have any ally. It says, you will not have against God any ally or helper, so it's the same thing being repeated in a different way. Those to whom we gave the Rite, recited with the recital, do it, they believe in it, and whoso denies it, it's they who are the losers. Now, these are the people who are given the Rite, as in they uh they believe in it. So this is important to this phrase, Ataynahu Kitab, cause li- later on, wherever it's used, is referring to people who. Are not just in possession of the Rite, they, they believe in it, and they recite it with the recital, do it, as in they hold fast to it, really. And whoso denies it, it's they who are the losers, again, I told you that the word denial i- is not just, you know, I deny it. It's actually, if you don't implement it, if you don't read it, if you don't remember, that's also denial in the Quranic sense of this word. Okay, now it addresses back to children of Israel, oh children of Israel, remember my favor with, I favored you, and that I preferred you over all mankind. And be in prudent fear of a day, no soul will avail a soul anything, nor will compensation be accepted from it. Nor will intercession benefit it, and they will not be held. And when his lord tried Abraham with words and he fulfilled them, he said, I will make thee a leader for mankind. Said he, and of my progeny, he said, my covenant does not reach the wrongdoers. And when we made the house a meeting place for mankind and a place of security, and make from the station of Abraham a place of duty. And we made a covenant with Ibrahim, eh Abraham and Shmael, purify my house for those who walk around and those who remain and the lowly and the submitting. Now, I wanna address this al-bait here, it says, why is Jaal al-baita, now, this bait, it translates to house. Muslims say this is talking about the Kaaba, but uh really it's talking about a place of gatherings, he is a, a meeting place for mankind and a place of security. So they could enter this house. It was big enough, is my point here, and nobody, nobody enters the Kaaba, no, you, you're not allowed in the Kaaba. And the Kaaba cannot accommodate a lot of people anywhere, maybe twenty people at the most. Um so it's not, it cannot be what, what Muslims say it is, because Muslims, what they do is they circle this thing, they, they bow and prostrate to it. They try to kiss in all this stuff, uh this is not what the function is, it's a hu- it's a house where. Uh it's a meeting place for mankind and it's a place of security, whoever enters it is safe, this is what we get from it. Though this house is not no more, is really what, what my point is, we don't know what the location is, it's not important, see, it's talking about in the past tense. Why is, means and when, so it's talking about history, um when the revelation was revealed. And when we made the house a meeting place for mankind, a place of security, and make from the station of Abraham a place of duty. And we made a covenant with Abraham and Shmael, purify my house for those who walk around and those who remain and the lowly and the submitting. These are not ritual activities, by the way. So, to continue, and when Abraham said, my lord, make thou this a secure land and provide thou its people with fruits, whoso among them believes in God in the last day. He said, and whoso denies, him will I let enjoy little, then will I drive him to the punishment of the fire, and evil is the journey's end. And when Abraham and his smile raised the foundations of the house, our lord be thou accepting of us, thou art the hearing, the knowing. See, they're working on building a, a, a place where people can congregate, not, not a stone idol where, you know, people bow and prostrate. If you read the story of Abraham, which we're gonna get to, God willing, you'll see, you'll see that this man broke the statues that his community was worshiping, these idols. So why would he go and make an idol somewhere else and start bowing and prostrating to it? Our lord, make thou us submitting to thee, and of our progeny a community submitting to thee. And show thou us our rights, and turn thou towards us, thou art the accepting repentance, the merciful. But again, it's an interesting note here, Arabic Manasik occurring also at these uh three places. Manasik are taken by the traditionists to mean religious rites, the details of which he claims to know, perhaps he really does, but if he does. He has no Quranic support for such claims, the fact is, the Quran leaves the case open. The injection of religious certitude drawn from other sources into matters which God left open has no validity in the methodology used here. Also, I've noted the fact that it says, Manasik in our rights, it does not say the rights for all time or even your rights, but our rights. And uh the only right specifically given in Quran is very simple and found at twenty-two thirty-four, so. Um again, this is, it's hard, this is kinda giving you a perspective, it's a history, so. Uh to take this to mean that, you know, Abraham instituted the, the, the circling of a stone idol in Makkah Saudi Arabia. That has no basis in the text of the Quran. Okay, so to continue. Our lord, raise thou up among them, a messenger from among them who will recite to them thy proofs. And teach them the Rite and wisdom and increase them in purity, thou art the exalted in might, the wise. And who is averse to the creed of Abraham save he who be fools himself? You remember that, when in the beginning we read in chapter two, it says, uh the, it said to them, believe as mankind believe, they say, shall we believe that the fools believe? See, this is repeated here, basically here it's saying that Abraham was not a Jew or Christian, we're gonna read that. But Abraham was not a religionist, he was one submitting to God. So who is averse to the creed of Abraham save he who be fools himself? So these people who are saying other people are fools, they are actually the ones who are fools themselves, because they think that salvation lies in subscribing to a particular sect. And we chose him in the world, and in the hereafter, he is among the righteous. When his lord said to him, submit thou, he said, I have submitted to the lord of all creation. The same did Abraham enjoin upon his sons as did Jacob, oh my sons, God has chosen the doctrine for you, so die not save when you are submitting. Word is Muslim here, see, it just means to submit to God, not follow religion. And by the way, uh this is, uh this is the testimony of God here that he's gonna reference later on. If you were witnesses when death was present with Jacob, so were you witnesses when death was present with Jacob? No, you weren't, I wasn't, these people were, no one was. But God was, and that's what God. But God was, and that's what God is saying here, so God was witness. When he said to his sons, what will you serve after me? They said, we will serve thy God and God of thy fathers, Abraham and Ishma- Ishmael and Isaac. One God and to him are we submitting, that is a community which has passed away. It has what it earned and you have what you earned and you will not be questioned about what they did. You see, this, they, this was a community, they passed away and they did what they did, now, uh, you do what you do and you will be recompensed for that. Verse one thirty-five, and they say, be such as hold to Judaism or Christians, you will be guided. Say thou, nay, the creed of Abraham inclining to truth, he was not of the idolaters. So they say you have to be a Jew or Christian, it's the same way Muslims say you have to be a Muslim, you have to. Do this Shahada and you have to start praying five times a day and you have to hold to these pillars of Islam which are not found in the Quran, to be guided, no. The creed of Abraham and Abraham was Hanif, Hanif, but again, translating is inclining to truth. And the word Hanif also means monotheist, as in believe in one God, and he was not of the idolaters. Yeah, it's true, he was not of the idolaters, but if you look in the Quran for this word mushrik and we're gonna look at it, God willing soon. Uh, is that the, those who divide the religion into sects, they are also considered the mushrikin, the idolaters, so. Uh, it's one, one doctrine really, it's, it's a unified doctrine, um. But these people don't see that, they, they, they wanna hold on to religions and say they're guided. Say, we believe in God and what has been sent down to us and what was sent down to Abraham and Ishmael and Isaac and Jacob and the grandsons. And what was given to Moses and Jesus and what was given to the prophets from their lord, we make no division between any of them and to him are we submitting. So we all, we accept all of these to be prophets and messengers of God and we believe in the books that were sent down with them. And we submit to God, that, so again, see, this is nothing, this has nothing to do with religion of Islam, see. Then if they believe in the like of that in which you believe, they have been guided, but if they turn away, they are only in schism. And God will suffice thee against them and he is the hearing, the knowing, the immersion of God. And who is better than God to immerse and him are we serving? So the immersion of God. Every religion has a sort of an initiatory act, if you will, and that's what it's saying that God's immersion is the best. Say thou, dispute you with us concerning God when he is our lord and your lord and we have our works and you have your works and to him are we sincere. If you say that Abraham and Ishmael and Isaac and Jacob and the grandsons were such as hold to Judaism or Christians. Say thou, know you better or does God, and who is more unjust than he who conceals a witness he has from God? And God is not unmindful of what you do, see, God already told us what, um. Jacob said. See, it says here. See, if you were witnesses when death was present with Jacob, so we already know what Jacob said, so this is the testimony of God, so. God is saying, and who is more unjust than he who conceals a witness he has from God? And God is not unmindful of what you do, that is a community which has passed away, it has what it earned and you have what you earned and you will not be questioned about what they did. Alright, so, I'm gonna stop here, this is verse one forty-two. I want you to remember that foolish thing because again, it shows up again here, see, this is the whole thing, the, the Al Kafirun, they are the ones who are saying. The, the man, general mankind is foolish and, you know, should we believe as the fools believe? And when in reality, they are the fools, and again, so once we understand that, we're gonna proceed on and look at. Uh, this whole thing about the Kibla and what actually the Quran is saying about it and the Majdul Haram, all of this is going to be can, uh, to be addressed. As we move forward from verse forty, one forty-two, so God willing, until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.